So the next item is regarding our land use discussion regarding the Shalane County PUD staff and Bitcoin and blockchain technology and mining and so Andy, John, Eric, who's coming up from the PUD to kind of walk us through some of this?
Hey, well, good evening, Council and Mayor. I'm John Stoll. I'm the Managing Director of Customer Utilities. I'm just going to speak briefly, then I'm going to turn my seat over to Chad, who along with Andy, we'll walk through a presentation. It's an abbreviated presentation of what we gave our Board last week. It's interesting times we live in, there's a lot of dynamic growth. They'll certainly talk about the cryptocurrency Bitcoin mining operations, but we're also seeing lots of growth in general, what we would call organic growth. And Wenatchee is no exception. We will actually be giving this presentation, though, to, I think, every city council throughout the county and hopefully the county as well. It's imperative that you're our partners and we work together and we collaborate. The Wenatchee area, over the next couple of years, we're going to need to add a substation down here, and I think you've seen from some of the other communities, it takes some time to work through that process. We've had some lessons learned from the previous ones, and we hope to use those and work with the cities and move forward. So again, we look forward to that partnership, and that's one of the main challenges Andy will be working on as well. So anyhow, that's really what I wanted to kind of kick this off, you know? When we get into the cryptocurrency Bitcoin mining, I know we've had a lot of news inquiries, media, it seems, since we've been out there talking about this for three years. We've kind of been on the radar, so it's interesting that the media has come to us, and they ask us a lot of questions. And frankly, from a PUD perspective, we're neutral. I mean, it's an interesting new technology, but it's certainly creating a lot of new stresses and dynamics. Our concern is we have a tremendous amount of requests that we haven't seen before, literally more than double the size of our system, and they keep growing every day, very large requests, and so it's something we're not used to dealing with. We're used to dealing with, you know, 1 to 2 megawatt loads are large ones, hooking up homes and businesses and whatnot. So it's something we're working through, but our main concern is we deliver safe, reliable power. We look after the interests of the customer owners who've built and paid for the system we all enjoy today, and ensuring that we have capacity for, you know, customers who hook up and what we normally see in a typical business growth and residential growth. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Andy.
Thanks, John.
Next. Chad Rissman, Shalane County PUD, just a little bit of my background. Been at Shalane for a little over 20 years, started there doing design work, now operating in the capacity of Director of Engineering and Asset Management. So one of the things, we wanted to focus really on the cryptocurrency. It's a new thing that we're seeing. We're really trying to understand from the perspective of the power system, what this means to try to serve this, this growing load that we see in our system. Talk a little bit about what, launching off what John was saying there is that our system was largely built over a larger period of time, and what we refer to as organic growth, residential, commercial, and industrial organic growth. These infrastructure and facilities that we put in place, we would hope that last 30, 40, maybe even up to 50 years. We would cite those physical stations, and then as load and demands grew around them, what we would do is we would utilize the capacity that was already available to be able to serve what was planned in the zones that were identified by your planning group. So that's how things have been working since I started doing engineering, but the cryptocurrency is changing the landscape a little bit. It can utilize, and we'll get into this a little bit more, but it can utilize a lot of energy in a very small space. So the question the PUD then is asking is what about the infrastructure that was put in place and planned for to be able to serve sort of this organic or what we're used to, different loads, and how does that get allocated and those kinds of things? So our stations right now, we have throughout the county 34 stations. 13 of those are 80% loaded or above. A couple of them are at or close to 100%. One of those is Wenatchee Substation, so as John mentioned, we need infrastructure, we need to build additional infrastructure. Citing infrastructure today is a challenge. They're not exactly the most popular type of facilities to put in place, but they are necessary in order to continue to serve growth. So we'll talk mostly about the cryptocurrency. I just, we wanted to mention in this slide here that there's a lot of drivers, we feel, and I think we all recognize, that growth is a great thing. We want to try to continue to serve growth. We want there to be capacity available for our plans. Development's on the rise. The economic conditions seem like they're improving, which is driving demand. Obviously, Shalane County and the Wenatchee is a destination area for recreation and things, so we're seeing more and more growth. It goes through cycles. We're seeing a lot more electrical demand, but we're having this cryptocurrency type loads on top of, or demands on top of that.
So as Chad mentioned, we're trying to be fair and equitable to all applicants, regardless of how they're using that energy. And we've got two main sectors, the cryptocurrency or blockchain technology, as well as the organic growth. But I just wanted to take a minute and put it in perspective as far as what type of high-density load or HDL inquiries that we've seen. We, since October, we saw a correlation with the value of Bitcoin, which is the primary cryptocurrency that's being mined here in the Wenatchee area. There are others, but the primary one is Bitcoin. We saw a big increase in that, you might have seen that in the news. Correlating with that increase in the value of that coin, we saw a massive increase in inquiries, well over 75 inquiries in less than a six-week time period. And those were from a variety of different sources, people emailing us from, you know, outside the country or coming in and showing up in our lobby, phone calls, just a variety of different points. As an example, today, we had six people that were from outside the county visit our lobby this afternoon, inquiring about cryptocurrency mining and our electric rates. These inquiries range between 5 KW and 100 megawatts. So what is that, what is a KW and what is a megawatt? Well, a typical residential home uses, you know, on average of about 3 KW a day. 100 megawatts is about one-half of the total energy consumed in Shalane County on an average basis. So the requests from the HDL or cryptocurrency mining is very wide, from small scale to very, very large scale. I want to pause for a second and just mention, they're equally complicated. Chad talked about the large loads and how that's degradating our system capacity at an exponential rate, the 100-megawatt loads. These are very significant from a total county growth perspective. But we also have these small requests, these 5K to these residential homes, or what we refer to as mixed-use homes, where they're actually living in the home and mining cryptocurrency. And those represent not such a major issue from an energy standpoint, however, more of a safety component, because the equipment, the supply transformers, the supply cables, our fuse protection on our distribution systems, many of those components were not designed for a high-density load. They were designed for residential use, and we'll get in a little bit deeper in that a little bit later. The other attribute that I just wanted to mention is that a large number of these applicants are from outside the area. Now, we do have some local people that are doing this, and, but by and large, 95% or greater of our applicants or requests are people from outside the state, they're outside the country in many cases, and they're here primarily for the low electrical costs for Just the note on the bottom is just to reiterate, too, that we do have an approval process, right? So we are okay with this mining, provided that you've applied for the load and gone through the engineering analyses processes, and that the system is designed appropriately to provide safe, reliable electric service. Unfortunately, the value of the coin, the Bitcoin, has pushed a lot of people into mining and living, kind of coexisting together without an approved load. As a result of that, we've seen some problems, and I'll talk about those a little bit later. This is just a map that, I think you might have seen this in a previous presentation a few years ago, but it does demonstrate the energy prices. It may be a little bit outdated. I think it was published in December of 2012. However, it is a good representation. The lowest energy rates are in white, and the highest energy rates are in dark maroon or red. You can see there's just a couple of spots on that map. Shalane, Grant, and Douglas Counties are the largest white spot on that map. That's energy in less than five cents a kilowatt hour. I can tell you from my experience that that is a very, very attractive rate for the business models relating to the cryptocurrency or blockchain technologies. Just to put it in perspective, as far as how that energy looks in compared to our typical commerce, this slide, starting from the upper left, shows a large grocery store. These are applicable to grocery stores here in Wenatchee that would use what we call an energy use intensity, or a kilowatt hours per square foot per year. Grocery store uses about 40, and you can see schools, about 10. Why would schools be lower in a grocery store? Well, they're out of school for a good portion of that year, right? So if you look at that across the annual average, they're a little bit lower. And you can see hospitals and residential homes and hotels. So most cases, I think our largest industrial customer that's non-cryptocurrency mining, our largest agriculture industrial customer uses about 98 kilowatt hours per square foot per year, operating areas. But you introduce this data, computer data processing, or this cryptocurrency mining, you're starting to see kilowatt hours per square foot much higher, 10 to 100 times higher than the typical commerce that we have. And so that creates unique challenges for us to make sure that our pipelines, our wires, our transformers, our equipment are sized appropriately for that amount of energy consumption. So we wanted to make sure related to that. Just another relation of the cryptocurrency mining, they use what we call an application-specific integrated circuit, an ASIC server. You can see in the upper right-hand corner, the dimensions of it are 6 inches by 5 inches by about 12 inches. They do vary a little bit in size, but that's generally what you would find in the cryptocurrency or blockchain technology. They consume about 1.3 KW or kilowatts. That's equivalent to a residential clothes dryer in your home, running 24/7/365, okay? What's unique about the ASIC servers is you, because they produce so much heat, it's important to compile them together when they construct them, and they move cold air, air-conditioned air across them to keep them cool. About 30% of the energy consumption is primarily for the cooling of these particular machines, otherwise they'll overheat and fail. But to put it in perspective, you can put about 1.3 megawatts of energy of cryptocurrency mining in about a 25 by 25-foot space, about the size of this room, an entire megawatt. In comparison, the energy used at our public market, our PIBUS market, and the new Hilton Gardens Hotel that's planned adjacent to that, if you combine the energy consumption during the, a high-use time period, that would be about equivalent to that 25 by 25-foot mining operation. Another ratio is that's equivalent to about 300 residential homes in Shalane County, the energy consumption. So the point of discussing this is just to demonstrate that it is a very high amount of energy use per square foot, which is significantly different than the organic and traditional commerce that we've seen in Shalane County. Just migrating to more of a safety concern, this is what we see as mixed-use mining in a residential application. Now, I don't want to demonize cryptocurrency mining, and I do want to pause to say that there are commercial-grade Bitcoin miners or cryptocurrency miners in Shalane County that really do it right. They're applying, they're working with us to make sure the equipment is sized appropriately, they're paying their fair share, they're citing these, they're meeting all the codes, they're doing it right. It's generally in the commercial and industrial sectors. Unfortunately, as I mentioned earlier, there's a big migration of mixed-use in the residential sector, which gives us significant concern. You can see that they don't really look professional-grade installations, they're from these photos. And the objective here is they produce a lot of heat, and they're moving some type of air-conditioned air, cool air across these to dissipate them. I brought a couple of examples of what happens to our distribution system, our supply cables and our transformers, when this type of application is not approved, and we haven't had the opportunity to size equipment appropriately. So this first is a wire, it's a supply wire, it was an overhead supply wire, and you can see the insulation, because of the amperage or the electricity moving through this particular cable exceeded its rating, that the insulation burned off there. You can see up here the arcing and sparking and the breakdown of the insulation components, right? So this is what happens when you push too much energy through a line that wasn't designed for that. Another example, this is a little bit different looking, but if you can all think about one of those fiberglass handholds, maybe an irrigation box in your yard, we make electrical connections in those flush ground handholds, the green handholds. This one happened to be about 2 foot by 2 foot by 18 inches. The overloaded cables went phase to phase, started an arc which caught the handhole on fire and burned the handhole. This is what was left of that handhole. It also started a grass fire, about a half an acre of grass fire, and fortunately, the first responders were able to get there in time just before it was catastrophic to catching a neighbor house on fire. So these are real, these are from our system, so this isn't speculative, this is actual concern that we have. So we'll move off of that. Just to summarize again, we've got a lot of growth, we've got a lot of requests for cryptocurrency mining that's on top of our organic growth, and we've got a bit of a public health and safety concern we're trying to address. So I'm going to turn it over to Chad to talk about kind of what we're seeing from a system-wide perspective.
This is a summary, this slide is just a summary of what we're seeing sort of at this moment, applications that are in process in various stages, and we expect, not immediately, but we expect over a period of time, because it takes a while for things to get constructed. But these are the things that we're looking at right now, and as I mentioned before, we have 13 substations that are at, and a substation is the primary provider of power to the distribution system, the distribution circuit, so it's really kind of the reservoir that serves the immediate area. So we're looking at, we're looking at these applications, and what we have on here in the various areas, and you can pull those out, but we're calling this organic growth, or growth that we anticipated. An application right now is about 40 megawatts, so that's dispersed amongst developments and condos and hotels and commercial things that spread throughout the county. But in comparison, right now, we actually have applications more that are knocking on the door, but applications for 220 megawatts of this mining and cryptocurrency. So infrastructure that's in place, infrastructure that is planned, you know, what goes where, how do we utilize the capacity that's available? How do we partner with the city and the city planners in planning for and managing growth and land utilization? So we look forward to partnering with the city more and more to ensure that we're guiding this in a direction that's safe and consistent with what our customers are requesting. So that's the end of our presentation. If you have any questions?
I think, obviously, our staffs have been talking about some discussion in terms of land use regulation regarding Bitcoin blockchain. So Glenn, do you want to, is Glenn here? You want to come up and talk about some of the meetings and maybe what the request is and what we're asking the council to do or look at in the next three or four weeks?
Yeah, so we were approached by the PUD and had a similar presentation and discussion, and we've been talking about the implications for our comprehensive plan and how that may apply to industrial, residential, and commercial growth, and, you know, regulatory-wise, as far as different approaches and how that may partner with the PUD and looking at this issue, and there are a variety of options to look at doing that. And what we'd like to do, probably in the first council session in February, is come before the council and discuss some options for you, and have a little time to, before that, to work on those, to examine them, and then come before you with some ideas, with an option to move forward. And even with that first op, with an initial option at that time that can be discussed by the council, and it'll take some time to, to put some thought process to this, to, you know, to put some code in place, should the council choose to do that.
Yeah. So we're not making decisions tonight. The PUD will come back at another time, and we'll have a more of a public meeting regarding this. This is just kind of teeing up the discussion for the council members.
Correct.
But we could do some land use stuff if we chose to that would perhaps limit these sort of operations?
We could, and they're very different, you know, it's a very different analysis, looking at, you know, the residential areas versus commercial industrial areas, and you can look at the use specifically, or you can look at a, you know, one thought was looking at a discussion and a coordinated process with the PUD on examining, okay, you want to do this use, what is the load impact, and work in a partnership with the PUD on that, and think of the capacity of the area, the impact to the comprehensive plan, and ensuring that there's not an impact, and moving forward. So there's more discussion, obviously, to be had on, and it's a new thing for, well, not just us, but nationally, as jurisdictions look at the load capacities, and really hasn't been planned for nationwide in that light, so it's, but we have some ideas, and we appreciate the PUD approaching us, and obviously, we have a shared commitment to wanting to see our plans implemented in the city, and, you know, we appreciate them approaching us.
I've got a couple of questions. You know, you mentioned the overloaded cables and things like that. Are they bypassing fusing that should be protecting those cables? How is it that these cables are getting overloaded without it tripping a fuse, or something that should trigger you that there's a large load there that you need to investigate?
Sure, council member. I can take an attempt to answer that. So, you know, when we look at zoning, we're looking at the type of use in that particular zone. So in the example of the residential sector, you know, our supply cables and our load factor, our operations are all designed around serving residential homes. And of course, you have the periodic gas station or things in residential neighborhoods, but by and large, we do have different sectors, as you do, and our operations and our infrastructure is, looks different within those zoning sectors. In the case of a residential home, most residential homes have what we call a load factor of 35% or thereabouts, meaning that, you know, of the full capacity of that electric panel in your home, that coincidentally, you would generally not use more than about 35% of that. As an example, would you run your air conditioner and your heater at the same time? Probably not, right? So there's things in the home that wouldn't be used. And so we design our transformers and supply cables largely around a typical load factor for residential home. The cryptocurrency mining uses a load factor much higher, around, you know, 80 to 90% load factor. So they're using the capacity of that meter base to its fullest extent, which theoretically, the panel may be able to handle that, but the supply cables and transformers that were not designed for that type of load weren't there. So we have a choice to make as a utility. Do we design every transformer and supply cable as if it were going to be a high-density load or cryptocurrency mining? Or do we continue to design in our traditional manner as a residential home? We have a choice there. The cost differential is very significant, and the impact to the amount of infrastructure that we would need throughout the county is significantly different. The fact of the matter is, the cryptocurrency uses 10 to 100 times more energy per square foot, and so thus, there's that much more pressure on, or fatigue on, the supply cables. So we see failure, to answer your question directly, we see failure in a variety of different ways. It can be an overloaded transformer, which has fuse protections in them that blow to try to keep them from burning up, but they're not always reliable. And in some cases, they may leak oils, or they may catch fire. Fortunately, we haven't seen a transformer catch fire, but we've seen some leaking transformers from the pressures of the oil insulation. In addition, we've seen a lot of secondary cable or supply cable with insulation, as I showed earlier, overheat and melt, and usually that goes what we call phase to phase, which blows a fuse, and we get an outage, and we respond to that outage, and we do a little bit of investigation to find that there's an unapproved high-density load in here.
So at that point, you, they're basically breaking your rules of having a high-density load, so then you can take action. But do you not see this in the power rate? You know, I mean, I was thinking about this earlier, you've got data rates that would go through the roof, and you've got power rates that would go through the roof, all of which you have a meter on of how much they're using. Is there no way you can catch these guys ahead of time to avoid these kind of things before they get bad?
One of the slides that we took out of here are some of the things that we're, PUD's going to do and is working on. One of the things that we're working on is putting on a meter that's got two-way communication, so we can monitor what the consumption is. Right now, we are dependent on a quasi-manual or a drive-by read that occurs once a month. So it's not until a month later that we understand what the, what the energy consumption is. So we do, we are doing that now for the purpose of generating a bill, not for the purpose of monitoring and understanding what's going on. So sometimes it's a month late. I just wanted to go back a little bit to the question about the fusing, because it's a very, it's a great question. The residential, the residential wiring and the residential connections there are designed, nothing's designed in there to operate continuously, so that's what Andy's talking about, a load factor. Everything's momentary, essentially, when you look at your house, your heater, your refrigerator, everything's cycling on and off, so it's designed lower so that you don't have to add as much wires and all these other things in there, because there's a cooldown period. When you start operating continuously, things that were designed to operate intermittently, then the infrastructure is stressed. The, an analogy I like to use is, you can't, your car is designed to operate, let's say, at 5,000 RPMs. The rev limiter might not hit till 5,500 RPMs, which might be, might be like your fuse. We rarely ever hit 5,000 RPMs. You're passing somebody, there's a, only a handful of times during the life of that vehicle may it see that. What would happen if you ran that vehicle at 5,000 RPMs continuously? The rev limiter would not hit, but the vehicle would not last 100,000 miles, right? So it's analogous to the electrical system. And to Andy's point about understanding where these are located and how the energy is being used and the infrastructure that's installed is the most important piece of this. So we can design, and everybody can design, to ensure that they're operated safely, but to utilize something that wasn't intended to be utilized in a different way is where we start to get concerned.
What about the data side of that? Is that something you monitor on a regular basis than a monthly basis?
Yeah, so...
Talking about the fiber?
The amount of data that's...
He's actually used very little data.
Yeah, they're processing algorithms, but they're not transferring a lot of data on the fiber network, and I don't know that it would even be possible to monitor the traffic on the fiber network. I just reiterate Chad's suggesting, we're doing our best to try to preempt failures, which is fires, quite frankly, and we're doing our best to try to identify where they're at, and it's a lagging indicator, because it's after the fact reads, and oftentimes, we learn that the damage has already been done, because it may have been operating for a month or two, right? We're looking back over trends and that. So we do what we call high-load reads to try to understand those. Advanced metering technology, which the district is aspiring to move in that direction, gives us the predictive failure. It gives us the proactive analytical tools to see a transformer indicating that it's going to become overloaded, or cables that potentially overloaded, and we would have an opportunity to have discussions with property owners and businesses before we saw a failure. So we look forward to that opportunity. Unfortunately, we're probably two to... two to three years away from even.
Overnight, doesn't it? Thank you.
I don't want to spend too much time on this, because we're going to see this again in another month or so. Any kind of questions for them while you kind of ponder this a little bit? I was going to ask Glenn, and I don't want to put you on the spot. So if I buy a mining machine tomorrow and plug it in my living room, am I violating city code?
In order to do that, we just took a look at, you'd have to look at the the zoning district you're in first and contact staff. Certain districts allow home occupation permits by conditional use permit, summer, or authorized uses. You still need a business license, and we have the opportunity to condition those business licenses.
Is there standard residential area? Would it be?
Like a residential low district would require conditional use permits. Residential medium or high is authorized, but you have to get a business license. But we'd apply conditions in either way. And there's a standard that talks about not, essentially not impacting the neighborhood electric grid. And we'd have conditions on that.
Do we currently have those, or that's something you're thinking about adding?
We have something of that nature. And then we'd probably ask for a yearly, with a business license renewal, we'd look at having something that, we haven't done one yet, but I'd like to talk to the PUD about maybe a annual checkup with the PUD to make sure that that is actually occurring.
You were saying right now, basically, it'd be with a conditional use permit of some variety?
Conditional use permit in some districts, and a business license. In some districts, just a business license. Either way, we'd have a condition on on them, coordinating with the PUD for the electrical, making sure there's not an impact to the electrical system for safety.
And when we bind the server in the mayor's garage, what kind of punitive is he looking at from PUD for not getting permission and from the city for not having a business license? Is there punitive?
I think I'd get my hands slapped twice.
We'd have to ask folks at City Hall on the, we don't manage enforcement on the business license end.
Not pretty much.
Part of the problem is there's not a great penalty for that.
And what's the PUD have for a penalty?
Yeah, sure. We don't really have a penalty per se, but we, it is in violation of our service regulation when there's a material change in load.
Can you terminate service? Pull the plug?
We can if there's evidence to suggest there's a likely failure of equipment that could result in a fire. I I would add that I am in conversations right now with the Washington State Department of Labor and Industries Inspector Supervisor. He's very, very interested in this topic. He's very interested in understanding where the municipalities might go with the code enforcement aspect. I just talked with him a couple of days ago. He really wanted to be here tonight, was unable to. But there's, you know, between the city municipality ordinances, between the PUD service regulations and and policies, and between the state electrical codes, there's likely, you know, some opportunities to have more more enforcement to make these things safe installations. And that's really the goal for us.
We do have code enforcement authority over, say, a conditional use permit. But, you know, typically, the remedy is to get the conditional use permit, or to cease operations.
I have just one, kind of a real quick question. This is more maybe to satisfy my own curiosity, but I'm curious on the the pictures that you you provided, the examples of the mixed-use thing here, that looks like something out of the Christmas story, Christmas tree operation. If those are kind of typical, and then going to the page before that where you're saying twenty-five by twenty-five space here, that'd be roughly in my house, that'd be my living room and a couple of bedrooms, okay? So if I could stack that much stuff in my house, and I fired it up, I'm guessing that probably would cause pretty much catastrophic failure in the neighborhood. Would that be a reasonable assumption?
We'd probably be able to see the cloud, yes.
Probably be able to see the cloud. Wouldn't be hard to find them.
Yeah.
So I guess, you know, where my question is going is that that what I'm seeing on the left-hand side here is that these folks are probably either for the lack, you know, the money and what it takes to buy each one of these units. How much of one of these ASIC units, what do they cost?
Six grand now? That's what I keep hearing.
Yeah, we've, we've, we've seen a variety of numbers, fifteen hundred to three thousand. And I, and I think it's a supply and demand issue, for sure. And so the price is flibious.
Yeah, yeah.
Right?
So I guess, you know, so these, you know, are probably a function of, he's got so many because that's about how much he can afford at that point to to operate where a more.
Yeah, I.
Well, I guess what we're saying, more a more straightforward, legitimate business operation would be putting in the ones we're seeing on the right-hand side here, where the fly-by-nighters are running the operation over here.
The commercial installation installations in in our county are, in my opinion, they're median codes, they're doing things right, they're planning appropriately. The residential are mixed-use, not so much. They tend to install enough machines to just keep things from breaking down.
Yeah.
But.
So they're, they're, they're doing the, doing the math to kind of know about where the break point.
I'm not sure about math, but they're, they're plugging them in and they're trying to run as many as they can just.
They see the light start to dim, then they plug one, right?
And again, you know, again, I just want to emphasize, we are not here tonight to demonize this at all. We're here to recognize that it's something that's very new to us, that it's a change in the way we plan and design our systems. And I am genuinely concerned because I've seen the failures, the fires started. We we need to get after that. There's an equal concern about the energy consumption from a countywide perspective. And so we've got two major challenges in front of us. I believe it's probably the biggest challenge in front of the Schland County PUD today, and will be for the foreseeable future.
So I, other than the safety issues and the infrastructure issues, I see this kind of like selling energy to California. Or am I wrong? Can you, can you address what the difference is in concerns and the way you provide the service? How is this different?
This is John again. That's a great question. It's something I wanted to touch on, these large requests that we've had. There's a lot of interest out there. There's some serious folks that are very interested in coming in here. And so it's creating a, almost like a new business line for the PUD to understand it. So there's three components that we're working through. One is the energy component, just like you're, you're speaking of. We do generate roughly twelve hundred megawatts a year out of our dams. We use about two hundred of that locally. You know, Alcoa has a contract, Puget Sound Energy has a contract. And then there's various slice contracts and block sales and things of that nature. So we, we hedge out our system. That capacity is really spoken for going into the future, various lengths of these contracts. So, you know, we do have that accounted for, but we have built a rate for the smaller size that, you know, again, ensure that they're paying their appropriate fees, similar to what we can see, you know, through our off-system sales. So that's a big component. So it's not, we don't have a hundred megawatts just lying around for some of these large loads. But as we look to the future, and if they're serious about taking the next steps, that's something we'll have to work through with them. You know, various mechanisms, contracts, but there's a lot to work through. So that's one component. And I think that might get to your, your question there. The other piece is the transmission. Can't discount when you have multiple very large loads. How would that impact not only the Schland County transmission system, the flow of power, but even regionally? You're really triggering a fairly large and fairly expensive study to understand that. And then that would get into some of the local infrastructure improvements at a trend, the transmission level. And then there's the distribution piece. So I think Chad had mentioned, we've got thirty-four substations. There are twenty-eight average megawatt substations. They run, you know, Chad mentioned about eighty percent. So twenty, twenty-two megawatts is where we ideally like to run them. When you talk a load of fifty megawatts to a hundred megawatts, that's a whole different animal in size of what a substation or a switchyard would be. And where do you cite that? And what are all the ramifications around that? So we're communicating those issues back to these folks who put in these applications. I know they're, they, they want answers, but we're just trying to work through this. And as Andy mentioned, it's, it's a, it's a pretty critical effort for us to work through that. But it, you know, I have to stress, we can't do it overnight or do it in a hastily way. So we ask for their patience, but we ask to, you know, continue to communicate with them and let them know that they're going to work through it. But it will take time to work through those issues.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Any more questions? Obviously, we'll see this again once staff's had some time to to work on that. So thanks, gentlemen, for being here.
We appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you.